Okay. So, let's go ahead and pull to order the City of Boston Shores Library Board of Trustees Meetings for Wednesday, October 11th, 2023. Ball to order and approval of the meeting agenda. Do we have any changes? Additions? Changes to the agenda? Okay, and thank you to Susan for filling in for me last month while I was on vacation. I appreciate it. And welcome, Allison. Thank you. Do we have any public communication? Okay, well, let's look at the approval of the minutes for the board meeting on September 13.
It's a move?
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the minutes are approved, and thank you one more time, Alex, for your wonderful meeting.
My pleasure. Hi, Allison. I haven't heard you change.
Well, then, congratulations even more. Okay, Keita, what has been happening at the library and what is going to happen?
A lot.
A lot.
You have your cup of coffee ready?
I have my Pepsi.
First of all, you have the staff. Things are going pretty much normal for each time of year on the statistic report, and I have several things to share with you this morning. Your library is in the 21st century. Our welcome brochure now has the QR code on the front that goes to our webpage, so we are right up there. We have also been putting it on our calendar for several months now. And so it's on the top, and then we also have it for Canopy, so the QR code for Canopy goes to Canopy. Last month was Get a Library Card Campaign, and you all worked with Michelle, and all together we signed up 42 new cards at ACE and MGA. So we thank you for supporting that service, that program, and it was well worth it, as you see, and she renewed, I don't know how many. So we'll do that again next year, so that was a good thing. For events, the big event coming up is, I'm sure I just want to share this. The Author Fair is coming up next Friday, the 20th. We have 22 authors. This is going to be the handout of the authors at the door when people come. We're expecting probably a couple hundred people to come. It has the author, their title of their book, where they live, and a quote. And what we did is we sent out a series of questions that they answered, like, what's your favorite, you know, author, or where would you like to be, or, you know, just just personal questions. And my super, my author's superpower is Tolkien called Subcreation. I'd like to be Christopher Robin for a day. My favorite writing spot is outside on a sunny day, so it's a really, it's a fun one, for sure. So, and I've been working with Andrea Ingstrom, and she has been doing all the publicity for this program and all the signups and the color and, you know, the work. It saved me a ton of time, and she's fabulous. So if you know Andrea, tell her thank you. Let's see, we have the memoirs and musings classes started. There are 10 people, and they're writing their memoirs, and it's going really well. Lynn Urbina is leading that class. Let's see, Sheila is coming up Saturday, Brothers. She's launching her new book, The 12 Months of Christmas. Book Group is next week. It's The Guest List by Luzie Bolli, is the title and author. Nick is doing computer class, his monthly computer class this month next week, and his Android phone basics. So guess what the November class is gonna be? iPhone. And Dungeons and Dragons is going really well. We're getting 20 to 25 people, all ages in that. Virtual Reality launches next week, and we thank the Friends of the Library for supporting that program. And I told you about the Author Fair. Bill is doing one of our famous Halloween parties, where we expect 80 or so people, and that's gonna be on Monday, the 30th, in the evening. And John Larson from the Pulsum Museum is coming this Friday to share Grace Harbor and North Beach views from the Pulsum Museum collection. So it's what they're, they have in their collection says for the North Beach area, but it should be really, really interesting. That's at 2:00. And I think that's all that's coming up. You know, I did put copies of October and November up there for you, and the interesting thing beside the iPhone basics, it's coming in November, is we're having a class on what is artificial intelligence? And how does that affect you? And that's on the Friday, the 17th, at 2:00. Even that, virtual reality will happen again, and Dungeons and Dragons. Nico's gonna do a fun program, a month-long program with the kids in the kids' section, and when they check out three books, they get three Legos, and we're gonna build a tower, and we're gonna see how how tall the tower gets. So that'll be fun. Okay, and any questions? On that one. October movies that Marty helps me with is horror movies, and we have 200 films, from 1931 to 2023, that are horror. Cheers. And then Canopy is going quite well. I put a staff on there. We're getting lots of hits. People are loving it, so that was a good budget item for this of the year, and I just put it through my thinking. Yep, that's it.
It's a question about Canopy.
That's true. Entry of the library? No, it's slide. Okay. And they're changing. I haven't read all the details on it, but they're changing what they call that. It's like from credits to something. Did you see that either?
Oh, no, it's still credits. That is last.
Yeah, it's coming, it's coming like the end of the month or something. I haven't read it, but it's gonna be, it's just a word change. It's not a a number change. So, no, Canopy's going really well. And a while back, we talked about presenting you an update of the strategic plan and just a general update of where things are operation-wise in the, with the library. So I'm gonna take a minute or two to do that. Just to refresh your thing, you're, we put out a budget, you approve the budget, and the budget goes to the city, and it's in this Excel spreadsheet that's on the City of Boston webpage, our webpage. So we have our budget, and then every bill that I get, I process on an Excel spreadsheet that looks like this. And then once a month, I give the voucher back from the finance department that says, yes, that's been paid. And when they've been paid, then I make a note of the date paid on the write-in column, so I know where every single penny goes that we spent through this library. And right now, we're up to 369 bills that I've submitted and processed this year so far. So that gives you an idea of my process. The vouchers come in once a month. I just received that paper just today. I can tell exactly in the categories that are listed on the budget sheet on ASCO how much we spent, what percent we spent of that line item. For example, get some books here. For, for the books line item, we budgeted $23,000. We have spent, no, that's not right. The budget was, I don't remember. Anyway, we spent 29.55%, which is what I look at in the books item, and what was the budget on books? The budget on books was $40,053. No, wrong, my budget. I think it's hard. Anyway, we were, we were really good on that. The bottom line is what is important, and that's the front page that she sent me, and it's with all of the other departments, and our budget for '22, '23, '24 was $1,024. And so far, we have spent $361,000, so we're at 35.27% that we've spent. If you're spending every penny and you calculate what you would spend each month for the 24 months, we would be at 37.5. So we are 2.23% under right now.
And that's a 24-month budget.
Yeah, that's a 2-year budget.
Under here with budget.
And that's, that's where I like to keep. I like to keep it at 2% to 3% under in some that happens, window breaks or that you just, you just never know. But it will all be spent by December of '24. Right. No, no worries on that. So that's a little update on budget. And then I wanted to tell you that the Friends of the Library also support the library, and they have given us about $16,000 this year, and they're going to be giving us probably about $26,000 next year. We're increasing our programs. The reason it is so much more is this year, the Friends budget, not the library budget, picked up the watermelon, the hot dog, the ice cream social, and some of those other programs. This year, we put it all into the library budget, so that's the increase there. So there's no event Friends budget, it's all library budget. Does that make sense? They're ready. So I'm absolutely pleased with that. We're also going to be purchasing a 3D printer. I mean, I'll feel to be, you'll be presented when I get to it, a policy that we're gonna add to our policies on the 3D printer, how it's gonna be used, who's gonna use it, et cetera, et cetera. So that's coming. And we're adding a really fun, big program in the fall. We're calling it the Fall Festival with apples and pumpkins and whatever I can come up with for fall for all ages. And then the other exciting thing is the foundation supported the library this year for the umbrellas and the, yeah, the umbrellas and WLA, that was the other thing. We sent staff to the library conference. That was about 30,000 that they supported us. And I'm ecstatic to say that as of yesterday, they are now, the foundation is moving forward on a Lit Parkway sign of this, so that's gonna, that'll be coming down on my pretty soon. And then I wanted to go over the strategic plan with all of you. And I'm gonna be doing this quarterly, so you'll have an idea of of where we are, what we stand, and half us on our own. So let me just make a comment on the strategic plan. As of October this year, you open it up, and you're in the green column, provided comfortable and safe place to visit. You can check off all the services that have been accomplished. And shelving provided by the FOL was also brought in. We rearranged the fiction and the movies, so the horror movies are in one section. It just flows better, and we created a new author, local authored collection, and expanded the adult fiction. So in this, in the green box, that happened as well as all the other things. In the connect to the online world, everything in that services box has been accomplished as well. We have 16 internet PCs. We have Wi-Fi from 6:00 in the morning till 10:00 at night. Nick is doing his monthly computer classes, and Bookatechy is extremely busy. And we have Facebook for social media, and we've added Canopy and Libby to that box, so those are done. The blue box, stimulate imagination through reading, viewing, and listening pleasure. Again, we've accomplished all three in that box. Michelle does a Facebook page and is posting books she's read and reader's advisory on it, which is being very well received. We have book group programs, and we have our bulletin boards that Lisa and Nico do, and those change monthly. And then the Promote Lifelong Reading box, the collections list under services is a constant. It's ongoing. It, you know, just continually is updated. We have referral and information. We do it every day. Again, it's constant. It's ongoing. And programs, we, as you know, had 33 summer programs for all ages with over 1,500 people attending. The community and city information line is a separate section, and we have that on our webpage. We have community information, and we update it constantly. And Nick checks Cam's work every Tuesday. Cam updates the webpage every Monday, so it's done. And then for staff training, we sent a staff to WLA last year, so we're, we're right on target with the strategic plan.
That's great.
And that's all I wanted to share.
Yeah, thank you for the update on that. And the continual work on all of the services that you provide on an ongoing basis, which are amazing. Are there any questions for Keita? What's going on, as always?
Yeah.
And we really appreciate the, the budget and the strategic plan, and of course, I'm sure everybody knows that you can go and talk to Keita anytime if you have any questions about that budget.
Fun to bring around you.
Or dog treats. Oh, I guess, no, 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 we're not allowed to bring dog treats. I'm sorry. Okay. Council meeting presentation. Susan, you're on for October 23rd.
I am, for October 23rd.
Okay, and November, I think y'all, it's my turn, isn't it? I don't know. I think so. It could be worse. It could be mine. It doesn't matter, mine. I haven't done that for a while either, so whatever.
Do you wanna switch for October? Because I'm gonna be on vacation that week.
Oh.
And it would be so nice.
Yeah.
But I wouldn't have to do that. Do you wanna switch? I'll do the November and you do the October.
Okay, that'd be great. Yeah.
Great, thank you. I was gonna ask, but.
So you being, you?
She'll be. Uh, yeah, unless I.
Oh, right.
I mean, we had a it just seemed like it was a long time, but if anyone else wants to do October, feel free.
That's fine. I'll do it after October.
After.
Yeah.
Okay, so Denise, you're on for October?
Okay, I will do October.
And November?
27th, yeah, because I'm not going anywhere doing anything for.
Okay.
27th, you said?
November 27th, yeah.
Okay.
I'll do that. Thanks, Denise.
Oh, you're welcome.
Appreciate it. Nothing I'd like for too more than speaking in public during my vacation. Wait it out every time. Yeah.
Well, November, I'm good. Okay. And as usual, I'll, I'll send you a graph.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. New business, policy review. Yay!
Your favorite.
My favorite thing. Okay. Did everyone find the policies?
Yes, I'm sorry for all my emails.
No, I'm, no, obviously, I was not operating on a full set.
I have it now.
Okay.
Thank you for the link.
Okay, so a table of contents is, that was updated the 20, October 21. So let's go ahead and start with, I did check to make sure that the ones that I have printed are the ones that are on the the website. I, I did notice, Keita, on the, the website, when the, the table of contents there, some of them have November after them, and we should probably we should probably just take that November off.
Oh, okay. That's already printed, because we've been printing the other one.
Yeah. If we just take, I think I'll keep all these up. Yeah, because the date is always on the policy itself.
Yeah, yeah, good date. Okay. I'll do that.
Okay, what I was showing is that on the library policies, on the table of contents here, it has like general policy statement, November. Vision and mission, November, if you look at the website, and, because that's when we initially did it in 2020, so but the policy itself has when it was adopted. So if we look at general policy statement, adopted board of trustees, December 2020.
So we're just removing the repetitive.
Just, yeah, just on the table of contents. Yeah, the policies will, we'll have whatever date. Okay, oh, I know you are. Okay, so the first first policy we have is 1.1 general policy statement. Does everyone have those in front? I don't think there has been anything that has changed in that. It just explains what are that the policy manual guides with policies and principles, the Ocean Shores Public Library, and that the library director is responsible for administration of the policies. So any, any change on that? Okay. Overall policies, Policy 1.2, vision and mission. I believe we do need to update that. This was updated, ours was adopted in December 2020, and that was before we did the strategic plan of 2023. So that first paragraph there only refers to the initial 2020 strategic plan. So I think that, that paragraph needs to be updated, and I, I would say that it, all we need to do is really copy the strategy development from the strategic plan and replace it with what's there, if that makes sense?
Yes, I think that's good.
Yes. Because our vision and mission are the same. You gonna do that, send it to me?
Yeah.
Okay. Does that make?
Yes, that's great.
That make sense? Okay, then, what we will do is I will then, I will send Keita the update, and I will bring the update back next month because we would need to approve it again. Okay? Policy 2.1, Board of Trustees, the municipal code. All this does is refer to the municipal code 2.60, which is what establishes the, the library in town, and that has not changed. So does anyone see any wording that needs? Okay. The next is 2.2, public meetings. And Keita, the only question I had was where it mentions at the board agenda, and I believe at the time, this of the, let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5th paragraph, where it talks about where the city clerk posts the agenda. Whether that has changed or not, at the time, Sarah gave us that wording.
Oh, it's, she does that, and that's exactly what she does.
Okay. All right, so everything else that refers to the, the Open Public Meetings Act is from the state, and that has not changed. Okay. So we don't need any change in that. 2.3 is public communication. And again, these public communication guidelines were taken from the cities' guidelines. So I don't believe anything has changed since then. Everything look okay there?
I do have a question.
Yes.
It's a general question. At the header of the policies, we have adopted board of trustees, December 2020. I think we should put something that's reviewed and approved or some wording, 2023, at the top in there, so we know that we've reviewed them.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Okay. Just, yeah, I don't know what the word, what word you want, but like, 2.3 adopted, and then just underneath it, what would you like me to say and tie it under 23?
Reviewed, reviewed and approved, 2023?
So.
Yeah, that sounds good.
That's good.
Okay.
So we know it's up to date.
I will do that until we finish this process of going through all of them, and then I will update it and give it to Cam for the webpage.
2.4, Code of Ethics. Again, this is, I do keep up with the American Library Association, and of course, Keita does too. And this is simply the Code of Ethics adapted from the United for Libraries, which is the United for Libraries. Section is the one related to boards. And this is simply adapted from American Library Association, so nothing has changed in it. Unless you would like to change something.
Sounds good.
Sounds good. Okay. Policy 3.0, that was actually not from 2020, but from January 2021. And Keita, do you have any changes?
No.
Okay, and that covers our collection philosophy, material selection and maintenance, maintenance of the collection, gifts and so forth. Okay, Policy 4.0, borrowing materials was actually revised. And maybe we can follow this format, because we have initially, when it was adopted, 2021, and then revised, January 2023, so maybe you just wanna use that format.
Revised.
Oh, well, no, instead, I'm just saying, you know, reviewed or something.
I like that it says approved.
Yeah. So since that was this year, just a few months ago, and if you remember, we changed this when, no fines, when we approved that we were not going to charge any fines for overdue library materials anymore, so that.
I think I must have an older copy because it still has the late fees on the one that I'm working on.
Okay, the most current one is on the website.
Okay, I just took it off of what you pushed the Ocean Shores Library.
Only reason, you know.
And I'm looking at the one posted on the library, and it still had the late fees, so that needs to be updated.
Oh, that's interesting, because when I looked at it, mine said revised 2023.
Me too.
Yeah, I don't have anything.
I don't have any late fees on mine.
You don't? See, I don't have one that says revised, and I, you know, on the agenda, it had this thing that you could click on and get the policies, and that's what I took off. I didn't take it from the library, so.
Oh, okay.
I should have taken it from the library.
From the library, yeah.
That one's probably from FilePro, so I'll let Sarah know.
Yeah, I'm looking at it right now. It's on FilePro.
Oh, okay, okay. So.
So FilePro needs to be updated, yes, so.
I'll let Sarah know.
Yeah.
I love it.
Yeah, webpage is good.
Webpage is good.
Apparently where the webpage goes, the library webpage is different than, than FilePro.
Okay.
Yeah, because mine was from the library.
Yeah.
The library, so yeah, if you go under, uh, board of trustees, that, that section.
Okay.
There's the library policies, all of them are listed and all of them are updated because I, I did a, a check of my printed ones versus what was on there.
Well, at least we found out the link wasn't right.
No, well, that, yeah, no, that's a valuable thing, all right, okay. Okay, so twenty twenty three for borrowing materials and then the last one that we're looking at today is, uh, patron code of conduct. And, um, are there any things that need to be changed in that, Kita?
No.
And, uh, patron code of conduct, if you all remember, was, was also checked with the, the city to make sure. Uh, that we defined illegal behavior correctly and, uh, destructive behavior and personal responsibility. And that one was also, uh, the date I have on that is June twenty twenty one. So I'm not sure what was on.
I do have it in twenty twenty one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right. Okay, well, I will get that, uh, minor revision in terms of the development of the strategic plan to all of you next month.
Some question here.
Yes.
If I have the, uh, the other version, the confidentiality issue is then included in the webpage version?
Six.
Six?
Yeah, it, it is, and I, I'm sorry, I think I wrote, um, we were going to do policies one to five today.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, so confidentiality, so next month, uh, policies six to ten. And policies six to ten are confidentiality, intellectual freedom, services. Computer services, uh, and meeting rooms. Yeah. So Kita, um, now that we're going to have the virtual reality, uh, I don't know if there's, uh, anything under computer services. That would need to be changed.
Strictly now, it was a program.
Well, it is, but it's also, uh, use of equipment, so, uh, anyway, just.
And the three D printer?
Oh.
That kind of, not gonna happen till next year.
Okay.
Twenty twenty four, I did I?
Yeah, just, just thinking that as we, you know, continue to e- expand. Um.
Okay.
You know, the e, e resources, whether there's anything that would need to be changed in that.
What policy are you looking at?
Uh, I'm, I'm just looking at the, the general overall titles of them here. The confidentiality, intellectual freedom, services, computer services and meeting rooms are the ones for next time.
Right.
So just if there's anything in terms of the strategic plan and additional services that might impact any of those.
That's your call.
I will read.
Of course.
I will read through them. But you can certainly alert us to any, anything that we need to be aware of. So homework for everybody, if you would read through those.
Six to thirteen or fourteen?
Six to ten.
Six to ten.
Oh, six to ten, we're doing, oh.
Yeah. You can do up to thirteen if you want, so. If you get over enthusiastic.
You know me. You know, one thing I did notice when I was printing out from the thing, and not many people are gonna print them out, but like, I went, I went ahead. And printed them out just so I wouldn't have to do it later and it, it's kind of wonky when I print out and it looks like it's almost like a different font and style being used.
Why didn't you do that, really?
It's.
I printed it out from the website.
You printed them all, all the way through the fourteenth?
No, I printed through five.
Yeah, it started, it starts on seven.
Okay.
It gets, it gets weird, but you know, I mean, I don't think it's a big deal, it's probably, people aren't gonna be printing them out, but. It's just sort of a different thing, I noticed.
She has to have one.
Susan, what changes? You're, you're talking about number seven?
Yeah, like seven, like look at the difference between seven, six and seven, it's just a font issue. See how it's kind of different, like a different font and a different thing and it kind of bumbles up the thing over there? The space is so specific, isn't it?
No.
And you know how it.
Yeah.
So it looks really different? So it'd just be, you know, just some, maybe, I'm sure they could just go, just change the font and then nine goes back to the old font. And then, it's just a different fonty type thing.
Oh, okay.
But it kind of obscures the, um, the date. Not a big deal.
These are all printed out, so mine look okay, so. So if we take a look at that.
And yours were printing from FilePro?
No, I printed them from the website.
From the website, okay.
This morning.
Okay. Okay, on to Friends of the Library report. Unless there's any other questions, any other questions, concerns about review of the policies? No? No, we only had one change, but that's the idea of looking at them is to make sure that we stay up to date. And, uh, have them, for everybody. See anything missing or things that are wonky, like, like fonts or.
Wonkiness.
Yes. Or inconsistencies, especially between, um, um, the, the website and, uh, FilePro and I did not think of, um, even though we had the link. I did it from the website. Okay. Alex.
Okay, Friends of the Library, they are doing well, they receive roundups from different, uh. I think commercial outfits and they were good contributions. They have been working on new bylaws, just like we're, well, we're not doing new ones, but they're working on their bylaws. They are pla- they are full of books, if you look around, everything is completely, all the space is taken up. So they're going to have more sales more often.
Okay.
The next deal coming up is the Friday and Saturday at Thanksgiving. So come and stock up. They had their membership renewal. And most people renewed, very few people dropped out and we had, uh, a, a new, new people join, so. In other words, the Friends of the Library are doing very well in terms of membership and in terms of ability to, uh, help with the program.
Do we know how many friends of the library, the library has?
Thirty eight lifetime, fifty four annual and one new.
And some of those aren't single person, they're a family.
Oh, I see, so households.
Yeah, so there's more than that number total.
Um, they have approved, uh, Kita's budget. And they are looking for nominations for, and they have some nominations, but they need more nominations for vice president, treasurer. And for member of the lodge. On October eighteenth, they will have a table at Ace to commemorate the, um. The week for the Friends of the Library, this is the official federal Friends of the Library week. And they are planning a Halloween extravaganza on October thirty first. And the thing that tickled me the most was that they have provided glasses to look at the eclipse and you can get under the glass.
Oh, that's cool.
They didn't, Alex didn't provide them, I wrote a grant.
Oh, I apologize.
Yeah, they are all different. And the Halloween party they're having is in conjunction with a fire and, um, Cuban printer.
Oh, okay.
Oh, not here.
And if you'd like to volunteer and get dressed up.
She's looking for six people to help.
I did it last year and it was fun.
Where did you go?
Yes. I went as a pilot.
Oh.
How about that?
You're supposed to disguise yourself.
Yeah, I know, I know. But I had the gear.
And one of the things that the Friends of the Library are doing is they are inviting the different nonprofits to present. And the nonprofit that presented was the Food Bank. And it has some really interesting information. Um, I was particularly struck by the fact that Grace Harbor, uh, has so many people who use the Food Bank. And is actually one of the highest numbers of, uh, poverty in. In, in the state, so. So that's him that we have questions or I've been informed about that, you know?
Thanks, Alex.
All right.
And the Friends really are vital to the, the programs that, uh, the, the, the bodies. And the foundation, Jenny?
Mostly right now, it seems to me that the foundation is, um, concentrating on. How to get the word out to people that they, their, um, either their employers now or their former employees. Might be able to match, um, grant, I mean, donations. And the, and they feel like that, um. That's not known to everybody, especially people who are retired, they, not all businesses contribute to retirees, but some do and they want to get that out. The other thing that they're trying to, um, find out if it's possible that some of the people that are volunteering. Might have a matching donation from their employer, um, for their retired employer. So they're just trying to get that word out more to see if there's more ways to bring money into the foundation. Uh, one of the things was apparently the Friends of the Library offered, uh, the foundation the chance to use their IGA roundup fundraising, but. Um, they don't qualify, there's a whole lot of rules that you have to follow in order to be on that roundup program and the foundation doesn't fall under that. But they were very appreciative of the Friends of the Library offering to give that up. And as Kita just said, they are talking about and I guess now they've approved the re-adboard outside, so. Um, so they're doing a lot of work and a lot of hardworking people on that foundation and. That's I'm, I was thankful filling for you, Denise.
Well, thank you for doing that. Um, Jeff, you presented to council?
Yes, on the twenty fifth, um, basically split into two parts, September event still coming up and then October events, um. I put together the list, sent it to Kita, um, I think it went really well, it, it's basically, uh, here's what we're doing, here's what's gonna, gonna happen. And so forth, so I think it went well.
Okay. Allison, can you still hear us? How, how are the presentations to council going?
Uh. They're, they're great, I love them and the council members love them, they give so much great information. And we really appreciate that.
Okay, well, that, that's the purpose of them, I just want to make sure that we're still serving the purpose of being.
Absolutely.
Okay. Jenny and Jeff, email. I don't see any, we, we did get a spam that said, um, they would like to show us how we could move our ratings up. Um, but other than that, and I am gonna be gone next week, so I won't be checking so on.
Yeah, I'll increase my pay. I never, I never actually seen an email on that site.
Oh, I didn't, we didn't want to spam. We did spam the other day, so.
Okay. Okay, so it is, is working.
Yeah, as far as I could see, it's working and every time, uh, my computer tells me I have to log in again. Google thing comes up and says somebody was trying to log in here, so I'm getting something, you're not getting anything. Uh, that's interesting. I don't know what that means.
Either mine was not working or yours is a little hazy.
Well, that could be, yes, mine is probably a little light. So you didn't get the spam either.
No. You probably blew it away before I was gonna go in.
No, I kept it because I thought, oh, well, I, I, well, I'm not sure about that, I'll check.
You must have a really good filter.
Yeah, maybe you have that filter, but you probably do, and I do, I'm sure.
Okay, is there anything else? For the better of the order? Or the bad of the order? Okay, our upcoming meeting date is November eighth. Twenty twenty three at ten AM. Uh, motion to adjourn.
To move.
In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we are adjourned, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Allison.